Good evening, this is the City Council Meeting of November 16, 2015. If you'd stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice our own.
Thank you. I'd like to call upon the clerk to read the roll.
Councilmember Althoff?
Here.
Councilmember DeBoer?
Here.
Councilmember Phillips?
Here.
Councilmember Tealander?
Here.
And Mayor Hedges?
Here. Thank you. Second item on the agenda is the agenda, in the additions or corrections to the agenda tonight.
I make a motion to approve the meetings minutes of the agenda, I'm sorry.
Is there a second to the motion to approve the agenda?
A second?
Thank you, sir. I move the second to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Yes.
Just a little information, the City Charter actually says we vote by city.
Yes.
But a little thing that Mr. Al brought to our attention two years ago, anyway, just what it is, so.
Very good.
There we go. Item three is approval.
You opposed.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. Any opposed to the agenda? Okay, thank you. Passes five zero. Approval of the minutes of our previous meeting back on November 2nd. It's in our packet for review. Anybody note any changes, anything incorrect, or anything we need to fix?
I make a motion we approve the minutes from the November 2nd meeting.
You can second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, sir. I move the second to approve the minutes of our November 2nd, 2015 meeting. All those in favor? Yes? Any opposed? Thank you, five zero. And approval of the accounts payable, item number four. Need any explanations? So Ellen is here, and she always explains things well, but any concerns or questions concerning the bills, the accounts payable which are included for our review?
Just Mayor Marion Finesi, the website, just wondering what she did?
She's doing some writing for us. We're in the process of putting together, people may ask questions, and so she's been drafting those up for us.
Anything else? The motion to approve.
I make a motion we approve accounts payable, as is?
All right. I'll second that motion.
Thank you. I moved the second to approve the accounts payable, and this is a roll call vote item, so clerk, if you would read the roll call.
Councilmember Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander?
Yes.
And Mayor Hedges?
Yes. Thank you. Item five is citizen comments, for items that do not appear on the agenda, so if there's any comments that citizens want to make before the council, this will be the time to do so. We'd ask that you go to the podium, state your name, and keep your comments to about five minutes.
Perry Beecham, I reside at 924 Riverside Drive. Just want to welcome the new council, and tomorrow night at 6:00 in the conference room is our parks meeting. I invite all the new council members to attend one of them, so you get to know the commission, and then also Laura Lowell, Area Recreation Authority, which is basically the trail we'll be meeting December 2nd, up here in the conference room, and invite you to attend that also. And I'm sure, Mr. Mayor, you realize we need somebody from the council to be appointed to that board.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Jim Salzweil, live at 505 North Jefferson. Congratulations, guys, for your nomination and your election to the City Council. One of the things while I was running is I wanted to really talk about leadership. And I think within probably the next 40 days, you guys have some tough decisions to make of who's going to be leading the council. And with that in mind, one thing that we do at Midstate, the company I work for, every month we talk about and we meet about leadership. And I have some information that I think is critical, that you guys understand what it takes to be a leader, and do you have those skills? So with permission, I'd like to at least pass these out to each board member. And it doesn't only affect board members, but Mark and Sue, anybody that leads somebody needs to understand that, so when you have that time, so I'd like to bring this to the board. Pass the landmark?
I need two passes.
Two, why? There you go.
Thank you.
Yep, that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Salzweil. Anyone else?
Peggy Colbert, 982 North Washington. I don't think either one of them is here, but I would like to thank Matt and Sharon for their service, and to congratulate the three new council members. I think that the voters recognize the need for fresh new eyes and ears on the council, and I'd like to thank all those who helped make such a great change possible. Now that all of this has happened, I hope that people will stay involved and follow what's happening in their community, and that those who didn't vote for these three will give them a chance to show what they can do and support their efforts. As has been pointed out many times, I am not a city resident, but I grew up here in Lowell, and I love the community of Lowell. I've demonstrated many times that I'm willing to fight for the betterment of this entire community. I've never been able to understand the attitude of the city council in so segregating themselves from the townships and treating the township residents as second-class citizens. In every other area of Lowell, we celebrate our togetherness and unity. Both Lowell Light and Power and City Water have township customers. We are all part of the Lowell Area School District, and in most aspects in this community, that is considered the area where all of Lowell works together. I think of such great programs as Peak Arrow Pride, Flat River Outreach Ministries, Senior Neighbors, Lowell Area Historical Museum, Relay for Life, Girls' Night Out, Christmas to Lowell, Riverwalk Festival, and Neighbor to Neighbor, to mention just a few. As township residents, we support all of your businesses and activities. And the amazing Chamber of Commerce involves all of us in all of their great activities. And so we, as township residents, we support all of your city businesses and activities. And can you imagine what the city of Lowell would be like without the support of all the surrounding residents? I hope that this new council will work together to collaborate with the townships more, so that we can really become a united community. I hope that we can now work together as the community of Lowell to make this an even greater place to be. Now with all that being said, I do have a question. It may be too early to answer this, but I'm wondering if you, as a new council, have any plans for working with the township governments to bring everyone more together in making this a better overall community?
Well, actually, Penn, we already are, so.
Okay, thank you.
And now it's fair to address the council. Seeing none, then we'll move on to item six, old business, strategic goals and vending projects. Mr. How?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. First off, welcome, council members, the board, Phillips, and Tealander. Under strategic goals report, this is a report that's submitted at each of your meetings. As the council sets goals for the city manager, I report to you at every meeting on those goals set and the progress that is being made. So as we go through this, I would ask that maybe you start to consider what might be goals for your city manager for the future, and how this may be modified, and then reflect it in this report. Under number one, street asset management plan, a five-year street plan has been adopted. I'll just note that that was part of a council handbook that we put together for all of them. Number four, wastewater inflow and infiltration. Crane and Newhoff has completed a draft report, and they'll be getting that to us for review in the near future. We actually have that draft report and are going over that at staff level, and we hope to have that completed report done soon. And then our plan is to have Crane and Newhoff come to you and back way up and talk about the lift station, the relocation of the lift station, and all of the analysis that went up to that project, because it is a fairly substantial project that at some point in time will be asking you to allow us to move forward on it. So we plan on bringing them to a future council meeting and walking through not only this report, but everything leading up to that. Downtown Trail Connector, as Mr. Beecham stated earlier, would like council members to attend the December 2nd meeting, so that their plan and recommended route for the Trail Connector can be presented. Under number eight, economic development staff, there was a discussion with the Downtown Development Authority about the concept of hiring a full-time economic development staff person. There seemed to be a consensus of the concept, so our next step will be to bring a proposed job description and other details to them for further consideration. And the last thing that I had to report on was on promote accomplishments. We've been more active with our Facebook page, and we're preparing an updated city logo that can be used with newsletter and other marketing materials. I've also created an account with Nextdoor. And Nextdoor is a progressive app that may give us the ability to adapt greater online connectivity and announcements with city residents. So check out Nextdoor, check out Nextdoor account. Susie, if you switch over, though, I'll show you the updated logo. So basically taking the logo that we have with the showboat, but adding some swirls to it, utilizing that perhaps for the webpage and some of the other graphic materials. Wanted to show you that. That is all I have for strategic goals, and there are no updates on any council projects.
Thank you. Moving on then to item seven, new business, and item A is the 2014-2015 audit presentation. And we have Peter Hefner here to, our auditor, who's on with Buck, and he's going to explain it all to us. Peter?
Thank you, sir. I'm not sure I can explain it all to you, but I am here to answer any questions you may have related to the city's audit, as well as Light and Power's audit. And I want to point out that the financial statements for Lowell Light and Power are separately audited from the city. Subsequent to their audit, their financial information related to their operation is merged into the city's report. So the city's report incumbents as both the city as well as Light and Power, which is not a legally separate entity, but just a fund of the city. With that being said, I have brought my financial statements along, and I wanted to point out a couple highlights. Typically, I look at, or provide some slides to provide some historical data, but this year is somewhat unique from the perspective of, this year a new accounting standard was implemented by the city, as was, this same standard was implemented by all cities with a 630 year end across the state of Michigan and across this country. And this new standard requires additional reporting on pension plans, and so I wanted to focus my talk this evening primarily on the implementation of this new standard, because it substantially affects the bottom line reported by the state. With that being said, within the audit report itself, on page one is our opinion on the financial statements. And at the very bottom of page one is our opinion. And I'm going to summarize it for you with, I mean, it's actually, the entire opinion is two days long. But our opinion is that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major one, the aggregate, component units, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, as well as the results of operations and cash flows where applicable for the year ended June 30 of 2015. And that's what I would refer to as the clean opinion, or the highest opinion it is that the financial statements present what's required, as required, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. If you would turn with me, I'm turning to page five. And page five is a couple pages into the management's discussion and analysis, which provides a nice summary of where did we end up this year, where did we end up last year, and what was the difference? What were the operations this year, what were the operations last year, and what changed? What were the capital purchases, and what occurred from a debt perspective, as well as what occurred from a budgetary perspective? So that's a big-picture overview of the management's discussion and analysis. I would suggest that that's the best place to start, to read through that entirely, and it provides a nice summary of what occurred. But on page five, if you would look with me, there is a table, and it says city of Lowell net position, liabilities, current liabilities, and long-term liabilities. And under the long-term liabilities for 2015, you will see that the long-term liabilities have increased from 2014 by approximately $1.5 million for the governmental activities, and $1.5 million for the business-type activities, and that is the result of implementing a new accounting standard that requires you to report the extent to which your pension plan is underfunded. That is the extent of the difference between the market value of the assets within the pension plan compared to what the actuary said should be put aside at this point in time to fund people's work through today. And so this new standard, big picture, resulted in a large decrease in the bottom line, or net position on the bottom of this page, of approximately $3 million for the state. And it's nothing that's unusual across all the governmental entities. The extent of underfunding varies from community to community, but this is one of the most significant standards that's been implemented recently, so I thought I'd bring that to your attention. With that being said, if you take a look on page nine, here is a more detailed look at your business-type activities and your governmental activities for the current year, and where do they end it up? So if you take a look at the net position for governmental activities, you can see there's $8.2 million business-type activities, $14 million. This is a full accrual, combine all your governmental funds into one column, and all your business funds, water, sewer, electric, into one column, and take a look at it from the entire government perspective. Now throughout the year, you're looking at operations from a fund perspective. You're looking at the general fund, major street fund, local street fund, and we're going to take a look at that. But I wanted to just show you where the data came from that we looked at in that summary page up front. So if you would turn with me, I'm going to ask you to turn with me to page 14. Here is a picture of what occurred in the general fund during the year. And during the current year, revenues were $2.17 million. You expended $1.9 million, and there were transfers in and transfers out associated with projects primarily. And you improved the bottom line, or the general fund fund balance in the current year, the year ended June 30 of 2015, by $100,000. Puts you in at a positive fund balance of $683,000 at the end of the year, and that's approximately 20% of your annual expenses. So provides you with a cushion from the perspective of property taxes aren't collected each week, they are collected at a period of time, but you have to make payroll every week or every other week. If you would turn with me to page 17, this is a picture of what occurred with enterprise operations or your self-supporting operations, and you can see here water, or wastewater, positive increase in net position of $190,000. Water, $50,000. Light and Power, million-dollar increase in net position. That's the result of additional sales, but the reduction in the cost of electrical purchases. And then we take a look at the airport, approximately breakeven, as was the far-right column, which represents your motor pool added to the position, by $24,000. If you would turn with me, I want to show you a little more detail on that pension adjustment or accounting change for the current year. So if you turn to page 35, bottom right-hand corner, it shows the cable which represents the changes in that pension liability. So at the beginning of the year, is the top row of that table, the end of the year is the bottom row of that table, and you can see you have a net pension liability of $3.6 million. The first column represents what the actuary says you should have put aside. The second column, planned fiduciary net position, provides the market value of the investments that have been put aside of $8.7 million, with the difference of $3.6 million of underfunded pension. And I wanted to just have you turn one more page further with, and I would like you to take a look at page 36. On page 36, the top left table provides a summary of what occurs if the rate of return on your pension plan changes by 1%. So currently, you can see that middle column says current discount rate. That represents 7.25% rate of return, or 8.25% rate of return, and given your expected rate of return on your investments of 8.25%, your current net pension liability is $3.6 million. Now, if the actual results, the increased rate of return by 1%, that liability goes down to $2.5 million, and if that rate of return is less than expected by 1%, it's the far-left column, your net pension liability is up to $5 million. So this is just giving a perspective of how important is that rate of return that is earned on those investments that have been set aside on the liability that is put on your books based on what the actuary says is going to occur, or based on, not necessarily just what the actuary says, but what the Michigan Employee Retirement System Board says, these are our assumptions for rate of return, et cetera, et cetera. But that's the variability of this number, and from year to year, it will increase and decrease that net pension liability, but it is the large change in your net position for the current year, and I thought that was worthy of bringing to your attention. With that being said, we also provide a letter to the board, which talks about our responsibilities, your responsibilities. And I wanted to point out that in the past, historically, we've also provided a management letter to the management, as well as the board, and identified the fact that the financial reporting process contains a material weakness, or had the inability to prepare the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And that was not necessary to bring to your attention this year, as is not the case. But there were improvements in the financial reporting process that resulted in that positive result, and I wanted to bring that to attention as well, because oftentimes, we don't look at the things we don't receive, but just those that we do receive. And I'm here to answer the questions that you may have, and I thought that was the biggest issue, but I'd be glad to discuss anything presented in the audit report itself. You received the highest opinion you can receive, or an unqualified opinion, as did Lowell Light and Power as well.
I should remind not her to discuss the pension, and in years past, the standards were not that we would have money set aside to cover all of our retired employees who are entitled to a pension, and what that draw would be. Am I right?
Sure, sure. Sure, sure. I'll try to expand upon that. Under the standards before GASB 68, which is the governmental accounting standards, or statement number 68, which we implemented this year, under previous standards, the actuary would annually determine what you needed to contribute to the pension plan to have it fully funded in typically a 30-year period. So if you made a change in your plan, that difference, that change in your plan, would be amortized over a 30-year period. Or if your investment return was not what was projected, that would be amortized over a period of time. And the actuary would say, set aside, you know, pay in X amount of dollars, you've always followed the guidance of the actuary, contributed what was required, but as your plan has changed or investment returns have not been what was expected, and that's the most prevalent issue currently, that the past 10 years have not met expectations, that difference would be amortized over a 30-year period, and you would contribute what they said, and you wouldn't record a liability on your books. Now what the guidance is saying is, the actuary may say, set aside X amount of dollars, but in order to make governments more comparable between each other, we need to determine just what is needed to be set aside today versus what is set aside today. So in the past, you followed the rules, you made payments as required, and a liability was not upon your books, because market values will increase or decrease, and the comparison of that market value of investments to what the actuary says should be set aside would have caused, you know, large increases or decreases. And that was not the guidance we followed. Going forward, that is the guidance we will follow, what the actuary says had to have been set aside as of today versus the market value of investments will be recorded on your books annually. Hopefully, that helped.
And also, just to clarify, too, that while we're in a negative situation at the moment with that fund, or it would seem that we are, $3 million, I mean, it's still a lot of money.
Yes.
But school districts are hit by this also, especially.
It's especially hard. First of all, I would point out that I do not have a governmental client, and we work with governmental and non-protonified organizations exclusively, I do not have a governmental client that participates in the Michigan Employee Retirement System that is actually What I know about the school situation is their plan is a cost-sharing multiple employer plan, which means if every school participates in the same plan, they all pay the same rate, and they share the assets and the liabilities, where your plan is just for the same. In the case of that pension plan for schools, it's extremely underfunded. Their liabilities are enormous. I don't know of a school that ended the year without a deficit as far as on their government-wide financial statements. Their liabilities exceed their assets as far as any school plan that we work with. So very substantial difference. They are very underfunded, where you are probably at the typical level of approximately 70%. I think probably 80 is probably closer to typical, but I have a client at 50, so it runs the gamut. I do not have an employee with, or a client with Michigan Employee Retirement System pension plan that actually is fully funded. I'm sure there is one. But it's a big number, it's been put on your books, and it's just something to be aware of. You're primarily operating from those funded perspectives, like the general fund, the special revenue fund, major local street funds. When you take a look at your business-type activities, water and sewer, they are recording the liability for this underfunding of pensions where the general fund would match.
Any questions concerning that matter? Go ahead.
From what I understand, you're saying there is an overseeing agency with the state that monitors everything that we do, is that correct? Is there an entity that oversees?
From a pension perspective, or are you referring rather?
From a possible, is there a situation where if we're underfunded and we dip below the average, are we subject to any penalties or anything?
No, no, no. The only issues that I know of is, if you are underfunded at various levels, you cannot make changes to your plan, like improve it. And if you contribute what the actuaries has identified as a required contribution, as you have historically, your plan should be fully funded over time. So you are, if your plan is underfunded today, you're going to contribute a little more tomorrow, and the next year, and the next year, and the next year, and get caught up as DIP.
It's like dollar-cost averaging, and it comes to?
Yes, exactly, exactly. The methodology used by the actuary is basically saying, we assume that you'll have new employees replace old employees, and their wages will go up, and there's a lot of assumptions in there, but theoretically, that should be fully funded. And you're now at an extreme level that's outside of the norm for Michigan communities that I work with. It's just, it's a big number to put on your books all at once, and I didn't want someone want someone to take a look at that and say, what, what is this mean?
Thank you. Is there a signal that says we are in danger? Is there some kind of a signal that we can have as a council that says, you better, you better look at this a little closer?
I think what you could take a look at annually would be, the actuary provides evaluation each year, and they are telling you how well-funded your plan is and why, whether it was due to changes in the plan or just the investment market has not returned what was expected. And it provides historical data for multiple years, so that's a good place to take a look as far as a start to just understand what are the benefits that we're providing, you know, how are we funding those, and how well are they funded?
Thank you.
While you're on that topic, if I could add a couple of things. The benchmark that you asked about, I tend to look at the history, what percent funded the plan's been, and historically, it's been right around that 75%, sometimes above, sometimes below, but it's sort of drifted right around that 70, you know, 72, 75, 78%. But one of the things that murders the Michigan, not municipal employee retirement system, has notified us of is that they're changing the assumptions that they make as they do this evaluation, and they're going to decrease the interest rate and increase the mortality rate. People are living longer, and so they're going to assume that people are living longer, and then they're going to decrease their interest rate assumptions. That's going to result in higher payments that they're going to ask us to make, will likely become, with that first factor, with the 2017, 18 budget, I think. So it's a couple of years out yet, but we're going to see that, and we're going to see, we're going to see those increases.
Historically, that provided its lies, and I'll go back to that model as you move forward, just because it provides some historical perspective as well. Or I can go in any direction you want, so before I see you again.
I think that you're going to make a jump up a couple of other points, but I think perhaps one of, I understand maybe Mr. Kielander's direction here also, is, is there a point to where alarm bells need to go off as far as the general budget, how our finances are?
Sure.
Fund balance, and that kind of thing. Are there some typical flags that we should be looking for?
Sure. From what, the primary operating fund of the city is the general fund, and the general fund, there's sometimes some guidance put out there as far as what is a reasonable or prudent level of fund balance, and if you take a look at the Government Finances Officers Association of the United States, Canada, they provide a suggestion, fund balance level of 15 to 25% is a prudent place to be as far as having a reserve to weather the replacement of the HVAC unit, or the flood, or the what-have-you, so, and you're above that level of the 15%. So that's, that's a positive. I think if you flirt with anything below there, it's hard to cash flow your operation. So I would say that's probably a warning place, but I believe the city has a policy as far as fund balance, or recently adopted a policy, and you met your policy requirements, so that's a positive. As far as the other funds, when you take a look at major streets, local streets, and some of those operations, they fluctuate fairly wildly based on a road that was constructed, just one road is so costly that you might save up for three years, see that fund balance grow, the fourth year, you do the road project, and you see it go back down to zero, so it's hard to give a rule of thumb for those funds, but the general fund, I think you're in a very safe range.
Share with us on the city budget?
No, thank you.
Any questions concerning the city budget? And I think you're just going to touch on Light and Power.
I would just point out, Light and Power, we presented the Light and Power Board Audit Report, gosh, I think it was probably, maybe several, several months ago?
Yeah.
And the mayor was there, as were all the board members, and we worked through the process, and it was a positive year from the perspective of, they have their biodegester that went on running, but also, they had a very strong year as far as revenue or expenses, as I pointed out earlier, approximately $1 million added to net position, and that helps to cash flow some of these capital investments they put into place. My understanding is that a year ago, would be two years ago now, the energy costs, we had the harsh winter, or were quite high, and, and once they, once they had a purchaser needing electricity they haven't purchased out in advance, we were going to pay a high price on it, and through their participation in the Michigan Power Association, they fought, they bought out power as far as buying out the coal mines, so that they don't get into that situation, where you're having to pay exorbitant rates for, you know, this day and the next day that it's colder than the next for a full-on period. So they had a very good year.
Any other questions concerning the audit? Good? Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
I need just one moment to sort of end it off, not for you, Peter, but I wanted to introduce behind Peter's Chris Brown. One of the reasons that we were able to eliminate the material weakness that had existed in prior audits is because we brought Chris Brown in, he was Strategic Accounting and Tax Solutions, really helped us out with our fixed asset schedule and some of the other issues to help us remove that material weakness. So I wanted to introduce Chris to you, let you see his face, and thank you, Chris, for your help this year, and we intend to continue to use him for his expertise, so.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on then to 7B, the city attorney agreement, and Mr. Dobbs, you've got some information for us.
Yes, I was asked for copies of this agreement, and asked to have some discussion, and the original agreement actually has a term that expired, we had a couple of extensions of that agreement, the last extension expired in 2012, and it was during that time that I had a conversation with a city attorney that was along the lines of, you're appointed by the council, and you serve the pleasure of the council, what do we need an agreement in place for? His response was, well, you know, just locks in the rates and sets the rates, and I said, are you going to give us some notice before you want to increase your rates? And he said, yeah. And I said, do we really need to actually have an agreement? He said, no. And so we never renewed agreement, and the rates have gone unchanged, and I'm certain that it still holds true that if we're going to have a discussion about rate change, that we had that ahead of time and bring that to the council and have a discussion with those. That was all I had on that, I just had some questions about the agreements, and just wanted to bring those to, and present to you.
So Mr. wants not charging us any more money, and hasn't for many, many years. Is that right?
On an hourly basis.
On an hourly basis.
That depends on how much we use them.
All right.
And, you know, I guess just for the benefit of the public, the rate is $145 an hour for assigned work, and then there is a rate of $90 an hour for ordinance enforcement managers.
Good to know. Any questions, Mr. Brown?
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, item C is the purchasing policy.
Again, along that line of asking questions about the purchasing policy, I'm going to talk about the mini quote in a little bit, and I hope you remember to point out where this is different in mini quote in one area than it is in another area. But we, back in 2011, 2012, we were having some discussion about purchasing policy, Light and Power had come to us to, as required on the charter, to ask for change in the limit, that the general manager could be authorized to make purchases without approval from his board. So we went through a process of amending the ordinance, and the ordinance essentially says that we'll develop a policy, and that policy has to be approved by, by the council. So we amended the ordinance, and then we brought to the council a policy, and that's included in your package as well, which was approved on November 19. And that policy actually is quite an improvement over the ordinance and over the ordinance structure.
Mark, excuse me. Mark, you said November 19, but it's November 19, 2012, just so that people know.
Yes, November 19, 2012. Thank you, yes. This is all in 2012.
We haven't done it in advance.
No, no. So that policy was adopted November 19, 2012, and that's what's been in place ever since then, and we've been working off in that policy. The Light and Power policy has been in place for quite some time, I just printed this off the website, it was revised in 2009, revised in 2015. You'll see that the amount there does reflect the previous council action of setting that $10,000 limit, and that is consistent with the city's policy of a $10,000 limit. And that, that's basically all I have, I just wanted to give you an overview of those policies and where we're at, and where we're at in terms of purchasing, and be available to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Everyone good for that? If you have questions or concerns about this, of course, hit Mark Paul, let him know, he can give you some answers to. Moving on to 7B, the wastewater treatment plant ditch cleaning.
Thank you.
Bringing it up.
Yes. Well, we've been cleaning and repairing the eastern oxidation ditch at the wastewater treatment plant. As you know, there are, there are two ditches there, and those are the very large reservoirs where the water churns around, and we had to empty it and then make some repairs to some of the mechanical portions of it, and then also clean it out. What we found was that there was a larger than, excuse me, normal amount of sand and gravel in the bottom of the ditch. We'd gone through the process of attempting to try to clean that out and run that through the system, but it really is creating some problems with, with the system. I'm giving you the simple discussion, Ron Woods can give you the detailed discussion. So thought if that's to just contract with somebody and have them come in and pull out all that sand and gravel material. We received three bids from Plumbers Environmental Services of $31,740, Perch for Environmental Services of $28,203, and United Water Environmental Services of $25,404. We are asking and recommending that you approve the low bid from United Water Environmental Services of $25,404. Now, I also mentioned, as soon as you switch over to the screen, that I go through the budget a little bit with you, just to give you an idea of where, where does this come from, where do we get the money for this? This is a page out of your, out of your budget, and it's an overview of wastewater fund, and this first part basically shows our operating, revenue that we take in, expenses that go out, and then I'm going to focus on this adopted column over here. And it shows that we plan on this year ending with net income of $241,000 in wastewater fund. Then the bottom section of it shows cash flow, and you have first your, your net from operating that you bring in, now this includes interest and some other things over and above this net from operating, but then you have this negative number of net used in capital and financing. So those are capital projects, and we plan on $250,000 in capital projects, or financing of capital projects. What's built into that 250 is $150,000 for capital projects, and then if we were to move forward this year and make the first payment on a bond to upgrade the lift station, $100,000 in principal on financing of that. So that's that 250, that's, that's what's set aside for capital projects. And then net provided in investing, and then, you know, we would have a net change in our cash flow at the end of the year, if everything went according to budget, of $27,150. So this is where that, this project would come from, come from that money that was budgeted and planned on spending as part of capital.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or concerns about the motion and moving forward with the...
I, maybe I do. I, the sediment, is it sediment, it's sand, it's product, is this just something that accumulates over time? It's not an event that caused this, it's just the facts of life that run in that type of a department?
We're not sure, and that's, that's the expert question, I'm going to let Ron answer. Normally, you would expect a little bit of ceiling and gravel, but there is much, much more than, than what we would normally have seen.
Ron, go ahead.
Councilmember, I've been doing this a long time, and it's an important amount of sand and gravel. I've never, I would not ever expect it to see the amount of sand and gravel at the bottom of that oxidation ditch. How it got in there is beyond me, with the mechanical devices that are upstream of that component of the wastewater treatment plant, that stuff should never have been in there. We suspected that it may have come in during the flood, severely high flows came into that plant during the flood of 2013, and may have brought some of that material and just overwhelmed some of those mechanical devices on the upstream side of that ditch. Otherwise, I'm at a loss to explain. As the pictures show, there are, there are big pieces of stone and gravel in there.
But that was my first thought, was that the flood might have been partly responsible, or maybe majorly responsible. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions concerning this project?
I will say too, just to preview for you, next year, we're planning on cleaning the west oxidation ditch, I think, next year, and we may run into this again in the other ditch.
How often are they cleaned generally?
That's a good question.
I believe this is the first time that that ditch has been cleaned, is that right? Right, Mark? And it's been in existence since the mid-1980s, since when it was constructed.
So about 30 years maybe?
So a lot of this could have been in there for a lot of years, some...
Could have been accumulation over 30 years, could have been a flood, it's hard to know for sure.
That's a, yeah, so that's an important amount. I never, I was shocked when I saw it.
All right, we have an actual item here, if you want to pursue this, or a motion to proceed.
Well, I, I think we have to proceed, and I would make a motion that we accept this, this bid of, from United, what is it, Water Environmental Services, and that's my motion.
I'll second. Thank you. Been moved in second, and to approve the motion with United Water for a cost of $25,404. Any other discussion? All with a favor? Yes?
Yes.
Be opposed? Pass is 5-0. Thank you. Moving on to item media, DPW utility trailer.
We, as you've been presented with the final audit column issue, we know that the general fund ended with an addition of more than $100,000 to fund balance. One of the things that I said is that auditors were finishing their work, and we knew that that was a solid number, is I said in Department of Public Works, tell us what you would do with $15,000 for equipment, $15,000 warranty, and I'll tell you that I'm thinking that the other 85 we would allocate toward next year's street project, which we're, right now, we're planning on Jefferson Street. So I said, tell us, tell me what you would do with the $15,000, and Ron went back and had a discussion with the guys, and they came back with, we really need to replace the utility trailer that we have. The other issue, I think, is going to be fuel injectors in one of the vehicles, but this one was the utility trailer. And so, Seth, you just saw the purchasing policy, and one of the things in the purchasing policy is that even though this is under $10,000, it wasn't a budgeted item, and so if it's unbudgeted, then I bring it to the council for review and approval. unbudgeted, then I bring it to the council for review and approval. We went to AIS Construction Services to identify a trailer that meets our specifications. We asked for the MyDeal price from AIS Construction Services.
Would you explain MyDeal?
MyDeal is the state bidding process, so the state will go out and they'll say, here's a trailer, it has to meet these specifications, vendors go ahead and submit bids, and so vendors all submit bids on this, they've gone through that bidding process, and then that price is established for that trailer or that piece of equipment. We did the same thing with the backhoe, we did the same thing with trucks. We tend to use MyDeal a lot on the major purchases because they're just, they're going to get a better rate because they're bidding for the entire state, and they're just going to get a better rate than we will get in the city alone on our own. So, that's MyDeal. We went out, got the MyDeal price of $94,37, and so we're recommending that you approve that purchase. Going along with that, I want to go over the equipment replacement plan and have a couple of discussions, and maybe something leading up to the next agenda item. And I'm going to preview on the next agenda item. I'm thinking that we may be able to pay cash for the DPW truck and not necessarily do this upfront alone, and so we could essentially just pass on the next agenda item, and I'm going to explain that. I had submitted to you in your packet the equipment replacement plan, and Ron and Ralph Repkin, and I spent some time going through that and updating, and what's in your packet is shaded in yellow, R and D updates. For example, we know that pile trucks are going to cost a little bit more, we know the actual price of this pickup truck, that then changes the amount that we would finance for some of these things. We changed some of this, this is smaller equipment down here, we changed some of the priorities on that, and actually came to the council on the wing blade and the underbody scraper at the same time that we came to the council for the truck and received approval to purchase those items. So, here I'm just going back and plugging those numbers into the plan. Since preparing the agenda last Thursday, quite frankly, as I'm sitting in the woods watching the doe run back and forth and thinking about various things, and one of them was the equipment plan, and I thought, oh, you know, wait a minute, if we, where does that cash break even point end up? And if that ends up beyond the point of financing for this pickup truck, then we could just pay cash upfront, avoid the interest, and the plan should still work. In the sheet, if you go all the way down to the bottom, the bottom shows cash flow, and the bottom shows as we look at either paying as you go or financing things out over a period of time, we really start to run into this negative cash flow position in '23, '24, '25, in those years. You'll see, I think that's where you'll see those negative numbers. But if I go back and plug into the equipment replacement plan that we just pay cash upfront for the truck, then we actually end up with a positive number, obviously, because we're not paying interest. So, when we get to the next agenda item, I'm going to recommend that we just pay cash, which we already have for the truck, we don't have to finance it. But coming back down here with the trailer, we added that in right here to the equipment plan, and then we added $10,000 in transfer in from the general fund to be able to finance it. And so, this is where that utility trailer and how it will be funded in the equipment I know that's a lot to take in. If you want, I can, I can back up and sort of give you the global view of how we constructed this replacement plan, if you'd like me to do that, or whatever questions you want to answer.
You know, we just started here. No, that's fine, that's fine. I'm like Tim Allen, I love equipment.
The, across the top, you have various fiscal years, and so what you have here is what the plan would be over a 10-year, a little more than a 10-year period. And the reason that we do this is for the bottom line, because we want to know, okay, if we start, we know we're starting out with $100,000 in cash a year ago in the equipment fund, and so as we buy and finance equipment, what happens to cash flow? And what happens over a long period of time? And that real low spot is here. We'll see it start to improve as we move up in ten years, but that low spot is here, and it's in those years of '23, '24, '25, and '26. So, it's a few years out, but as we're planning, as we're moving forward, trying to figure out how we essentially catch up on equipment replacement, how can we do it in such a way that we can maintain cash flow and still get the equipment replaced? Now, what we assume is that we are going to be making these transfers in from the general fund. And this was, I believe, it's 30 from last year, current budget, I think we had a 30, and then we start to increase it. So, we're planning on increases and transfers from the general fund in order to fund this. And I think that's important for you to know, that, you know, next year we'll be looking at $35,000, then we'll be looking at 40, then 50, then 60, then 70, then 75, and then a little while off at 75 for a while, and then I think once we get over that hump of '23, '24, '25, we'll be able to start to drop that back, but that's quite a few years out. We will update the plan every year and even mid-year. So, then we look at each piece of equipment, and these are, this is a list of all the major equipment. It's got pile trucks in it, some pickups, loader is in here, and skid steer is in here. And the backhoe is up here, we replaced the backhoe, and so we've actually plugged in, we plugged the actual numbers into this plan. And so then we say, for example, for, let's talk about the number 15 pile truck, we now have a better estimate that that's going to cost us $150,000 to replace. And so, if we assume that we finance that 4% over a 10-year period, our payments are going to be $18,500 per year for the next 10 years. And so, we just carry that over. And so, we do that with each piece of equipment. We say, when are we going to buy it? Are we going to pay cash outright, or are we going to finance it? And with these larger, major pieces of equipment, we're looking at financing. Initially, with pickup trucks, we were looking at financing as well, but as you can see, I plugged in just paying cash upfront for pickup, because I think we can, and even this pickup that we're looking at replacing in '17, '18, I think we can, I think we can pay cash upfront for that as well. So, then we have smaller pieces of equipment, the trailer, a underbody scraper, the wing blade that we'll be adding, mowers, those kinds of things. Still fairly major equipment, but not like the trucks or the vehicles. Typically, we're paying cash, just, you know, not worrying about financing because they're not those larger purchases, and we certainly want to avoid interest whenever we can. So, we plug those in, we plug those amounts in during the years that we think that we'll be making those purchases. Then as you continue down, we also, there will be a net gain on the sale of equipment as we replace it, and so we estimate what that net gain will be, and that becomes revenue that comes back in or goes into the plan as revenue, so that we can add that to our cash flow. And then finally, when you get to the bottom, you've got just that running cash flow total, so we can see as we make changes, as we talk about replacing a piece of equipment in one year over another year, we can make that change in the spreadsheet and see how it works and see if the plan works, and see if we actually can cash flow it based on the amount of revenue from the general fund that we anticipate to put into it. How was that?
I think it helped. Thank you.
When we talk about equipment replacement plan a lot, you know, equipment and streets are two major issues that need to be addressed, and they're two fairly expensive issues that need to be addressed, and will take big chunks of the budget moving forward to try to address it. But we have plans in place, we think we can make some progress, and this is the equipment side of it.
What's the trailer? What do we replace?
The trailer, I'd love to have Ron talk about that. The trailer, I believe, is a trailer that was actually manufactured many years ago in-house.
It appears that it's a homemade trailer, and it's not rated, and I'm extremely nervous with staff using that existing trailer. And we'll use it for, I think the last piece of equipment that I saw in it was a rover compactor for paving.
So, replacing the trailer comes down to safety?
Safety.
Yes.
Fairly enough specifications for licensing, huh?
Perhaps so.
Okay. It's probably could do with replacing it. Okay, well, there's a motion, our recommended motion here for if we choose to go this direction.
I'll make a motion that we purchase the new trailer.
I'll second. Okay, we moved in second to approve a motion for the purchase of the utility trailer at the MyDeal price of $9,437 from AIS Construction. All with a favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. Assists by a zero. Now for the three-year, don't wait.
DPW utility trailer, as I mentioned before, part of the original plan was that we would do an inter-fund loan, we would borrow from the sewer fund, the equipment fund would borrow from the sewer fund, would pay an interest rate that was the same interest rate that we got on the open market for the backhoe. I had a discussion with the city attorney, had a discussion with the auditors about, is it appropriate for us to do it this way and establish the interest rate that way? And both said that it seemed reasonable. But again, as I mentioned, as I got to thinking about this a little bit more and went back and towards the equipment plan, I don't think we need to do it. I think what the equipment fund save on the interest that it would pay to the sewer fund, and I think we can cash flow it, pay for it.
So, we're approving not the loan, the interdepartmental loan, we're just approving the purchase of the truck?
You wouldn't be approving anything. The council's already approved the purchase of the truck.
It's already approved, okay.
Yeah, trucks, so, Ben purchased.
Thank you.
We have that, so.
Yeah, you made that, so thank you.
It was passing, didn't it?
I think it's a consensus for you to pass it. All right, thank you. Item eight is our monthly reports from the various departments. Some really exciting reading here. All kinds of statistics and numbers and explanations, and all of our departments each month will tell us what they've been up to, so. Any questions or concerns about those, staff might help us out with. Seeing done, then we'll move on to council comments. And this is the opportunity for us to share our various thoughts and concerns, but Mr. Delore, you're up first.
I have no additional comment.
All right, thank you. Mr. Tealander?
I ask for some comments from the senior citizens, and I kind of call it senior moments. And all seniors are welcome to submit any questions to the council or to me. I'll read them for you, or we'll figure out a way to get this done so that we can hear your comments. They say it's difficult to hear on the video, so that's why I'm so close to this microphone. So, they're asking the council members to try to get as close to the microphone as possible. They also want the meetings, if they could, to be put back on the Comcast channel 25. I don't know if that's possible. Does anybody know?
I don't think that's that possible.
I don't think it is possible. We were working with the school system, and they're not doing it anymore.
Okay. Well, we need to figure out some way that they can watch these videos. Seniors tend to not work on computers so much, they play with the computers. I don't know if they do that with the pads or not, but I'll see if I can help them out. Anyway, I'd like to have coffee with them anyway. And that's another suggestion, coffee with the seniors, senior neighbors would work much better for the seniors if it was during the hour before lunch, during the week. I don't know if I can make it, can you?
Depends.
Okay.
Perhaps, probably.
And it would be helpful to see agendas, unfinished business with all listed and itemized until completed on the agenda. I think we had a little discussion on that, especially in some of the meetings we had prior to the election, so we'll, we'll probably, we'll be visiting that. It would also be great if the lower website were publicized, and the people informed how to get to the recorded meetings by clicking on the YouTube icon at the bottom. Do we have an icon at the bottom that shows the most recent? So, we need to figure out how to get that message out to people, so they can go to the website and just click on it and watch the most recent, or maybe they'll go back a couple. Yeah, a lot of people don't know that. Next one was, the city had a week of cleanup, and then some people just put their trash out by the road, especially by Bowes Road is what this note says. They hope the new council members will walk all over to see how people keep their yards nice and clean, and some people have what this person calls trash all over on porches, Pleasant Street is what they named it, in the yards. Just, this is a senior comment, so I just wanted to make sure that that was there. I wanted to thank all the voters, and what a wonderful turnout here. Thank you so much for coming tonight. Please bear with us, we're all new here, we're learning. And I like to defer to Abraham Lincoln in his first inaugural address. He said, "We strive to be better angels over our nature." So, with that, I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Phillips?
Very nicely put, Alan. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Alba?
Well, I had two boards made. One was the airport board, and we're going forward, looking for an exit for airport, because Dan's going to be leaving. And that's about all there is for that right now. Again, set in on the fire authority meeting, and there's one, again, they worked on the rules and everything, so another, probably another four-hour meeting. But anyways, they also had a demo there of a brush fire rescue vehicle that Ben dropped off to for the authority to look at, and make, and consider, the board considered purchasing. Because it isn't on the budget, I thought I should bring it to the council. And it's a use, it's a, how do you say this?
It's a demo?
It's a demo, but it's eight years old. It's not new, and I just think that it's a want, not a need, and it seems that it was not on the budget. I would like you to, you know, have me, you know, say no, so I can send this to you, or if you could, because it's our decision, it's not my decision.
Well, with the fire authority too, just to point out, just a clarification that there's two representatives from each of the entities, and anyway, we all vote how we think it might be, but it might go, but.
Well, I would support, but I don't vote on that 100%.
I just, it just seemed like it was getting rushed, and I think there's more, there's more needs there than that right now. They were thinking about writing a grant, so I think they should, you know, we should recommend that they put it on the budget and go after grant money, because they would be spending the cash reserve, so, and that's one of the... Because they would be spending the cash reserve, so that's one of the funds that we wanted to build up, so, because that's the fund that if it gets low, we have to refund.
That's a recommendation.
Yep, yeah. And because we, you know, a board is, does work under the general direction of the council, I can, I can talk with David and we'll go from there. Other than that, there's some beautiful weather out there and I'd like to welcome all these guys and we'll move forward and thank everyone for coming.
Thank you, sir. Welcome to the new council members. And as Mr. Preachum pointed out earlier, there are various assignments that council members take on and Laura is one of them. And this is an interest sheet that has to, to you guys, that we usually work through every couple of years, but in this case, we will organize by charter during our January meeting, but give you some information ahead of time to consider as we move forward and organize and represent the various boards and commissions that make this community so exciting. There's actually over sixty-two people that make up the various boards and commissions that serve our community and so people that are hardly paid anything, most of them are not paid anything. And so this is more than just a community of five people giving leadership to it, it's actually closer to seventy people once you include council members and everyone else. So that being said, look those over, consider what opportunities you might seek out and we'll talk about that at a future time.
Jeff, you can confirm that I'm not eligible for the fire authority, correct?
Well, you're an employee of the fire department, so.
Probably not.
Probably not.
But we can talk about this at maybe our either workshop or at our organization meeting in January, which is our typical time for making those assignments.
But I encourage you guys, if you've got time, go ahead and attend any of them.
It's my time now.
No, I'm sorry. But you should do that because there's a lot.
Well, there's a lot and we're all welcome to attend any of those meetings. Thank you. Coffee with Council was held last Saturday or so and we had one person from the public attend, Councilmember Altough was there. And so we will be holding it again on December fifth at the Senior Neighbor Center. We'll give that another try, see how that goes. And I might point out that in January, the first Saturday of the month is January second. I suspect we may not, we'll just skip that one. So due to the holidays and various folks being out of town, but nonetheless, Coffee with Council at Senior Neighbor Center coming up on December fifth from eight to ten a.m. Well, Light and Power had a meeting a week ago and a brief update there that things are going rather well. The biodigester continues to improve in its process. New equipment has been installed to improve the operating system. The tweaks seem to be improving the operations. And a couple of weeks ago, there were days when the system actually operated at seventy percent capacity with no owners. Greg Northrup, who's in the audience tonight, has indicated that they plan to declare full commercial operations perhaps in December. And it's now been running twenty-four seven and open along pretty all right. So things are looking, looking much, much better. Work continues on the installation of the Rolls Royce turbine and is on track to have it running in two thousand sixteen. Most of the late summer, fall projects have been completed, including the east substation reconfiguration, I can tell on that floodplain thing. And the Wolf Pappus Church extension and Envision projects are now complete also. Next is the tree trimming schedule for late fall and winter, so look out for that. Chamber of Commerce meeting last week also talked about dues and fees of various members that they might be tweaked a little bit, including usage and rentals by members and groups, which Coffee with Council has been using, but we'll see where that goes for us. An economic director was again proposed for the DDA and with possible townships involved too. Job description is incomplete. Profit duties would include attracting new retail industrial activity to Lowell, retaining businesses and coordination of services. Perhaps a seventy-thirty split being considered with the downtown development authority, but with the chamber's thirty percent falling towards economic tools, the director would have at his or her disposal. The showboat future is a concern. The chamber is taking the lead in forecasting repair and/or design of a newer boat. A forensic engineer is being sought to evaluate the structure and repair needs of the current boat probably after Christmas. Christmas through Lowell is this weekend, so be sure to watch out for that. It'll be busy in town and that's good. Merchants meeting is the first Tuesday of each month. They'll be taking December off. The next meeting is January fifth, five p.m. at the Chamber building. Annual dinner of the Chamber of Commerce is February twenty-fifth at the Grand Blue and City Council there too is encouraged to attend. Lowell Expo will be Saturday, March twenty-sixth, Easter weekend. The next meeting in the Chamber will be on December eighth. And that pretty much wraps up all I have and again, welcome to our council members. Moving on then to item number eight and nine, ten, ten, managers' report. Mr. Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Again, welcome council members, Bor, Tealander and Phillips. On behalf of the staff, we look forward to working with you as you set the vision for the future of Lowell. We plan on having Munich Code update the code of ordinances to incorporate amendments and changes that have been made since the previous update, which was in two thousand twelve. I had mentioned in my notes, and I'll do it now if you'll switch over to the screen, that I just briefly go through Munich Code. Munich Code is, it can be accessed through the city's website and if you look at the city's website under view, charter ordinances, that will take you to Munich Code. Within Munich Code, there is the charter and then there are, I'm not communicating And then there's the code of ordinances. And the code of ordinances consists of a number of chapters and then when you get to the end, there's appendix A, which is the zoning ordinance. So zoning is an ordinance of the city, but it's in addition to the other code of ordinances that exist within the city. Just looking at the site, they have, you know, first of all, this tab where you can go to the code. Then they have this what's called code bank and they currently have what's called supplement twelve. So you could go back and figure out what the code ordinances look like in six twenty-nine or two thousand and nine. And then what does it look like? This is the current edition, which is nine twenty-eight to twelve. So that's the last time that this was updated. Also in here is what's called the ordinance bank and that is going to be a list of those ordinances that have been adopted by the council since that two thousand twelve update, but they've not been codified, so they've not been included in the actual text, which leads to some confusion. And I'm having some discussion with Munich Code and we'll be talking to you more about how can we make that more immediate so that somebody isn't, for example, the purchasing policy hasn't been updated. How can we have, when the council adopts this ordinance, how can we have that update online be more immediate so somebody doesn't open up the old one and realize, and not realize that they're looking at the old one? But as you can see here, there are a number of ordinance changes that have been made and as a matter of fact, here is the one that I handed out in your packet today. It's the one that was done in two thousand twelve. What I will be doing at a future meeting is coming back to you and actually getting your approval. Charter requires that if we're going to do a supplement or recodification, that I receive council approval and so I'll be asking for your permission to actually recodify or add the supplement so that we can update everything. The other tools that are out there, I don't know why it's not showing, maybe it's gone already, were a couple of buttons here there, where you can show changes, you can turn changes since the last update on or you can turn them off. And then a great feature is that you can click on this update link and you can plug in your email address and so if the code of ordinances is updated, then you'll receive an email warning to the fact that that was updated. An email I received from Munich Code recently talked about these features and how they were promoting them and giving them to us for free, but the time is going to run out on that and so we need to go back and look at that and, you know, I don't see what the price is, but these seem to be actually fairly user-friendly and fairly transparent features of the code and so I would hope that keeping those in Munich Code would be not costly at all for us to do that. And then there's a, you know, menu. If you're really into this stuff, you can sign up, it's called Munich Code Pro, which will give you access to all of the codes and ordinances from various cities throughout the United States that are out there. And one of the things about Munich Code Pro that I'll throw out there is that with the multi-state, you can see all the states that are out there. If I go down to Michigan, you can see there are quite a few municipalities in Michigan that are utilizing Munich Code. So that's in Munich Code, just wanted to give you a heads up that that will be coming in the council meeting and just wanted to familiarize you with the site as well. Michigan Department of Transportation is gearing up for Millen resurface project event twenty-one. I've mentioned this before, I'll mention it again and I've probably mentioned it several times, but it's important for you to know that we went through this process of creating a downtown placemaking plan. Part of that placemaking plan was to install bump outs at various intersections throughout downtown. Another part of that plan was to add parking from Monroe Street heading east, which would narrow the lanes from here heading out of town because we would add parking on that one side and then we'll have narrow the minimum lane width that's allowed on the state highway in this section of town. The idea is that that narrower lane width will hopefully slow traffic down as they're entering from the other end of town. As they do that Millen resurface project, they have in their plans to use the paint. They said paint's cheap, so they'll use the paint to re-stripe them, they'll also stripe out those bump outs so we can see what the bump outs would look like if we actually constructed them. But I think it's important for you to know that they plan on striping it that way and the lane widths will be narrower. So think about that and maybe talk to folks about that as well. City Clerk Susan Ollory, she's announcing that Tricia Dunham is joining us this week as our new deputy city clerk. We're looking forward to having Tricia join the team with the city of Lowell and today was her first day and we try not to overwhelm her too much and I think we're off to a great start, so happy to have Tricia on board. And then I mentioned during the swearing-in ceremony for new council members, we distributed an updated version of the council history book. Just wanted to briefly go through that and any items in the handbook or the handbook itself, I'd like to make that available on the website and if anybody wants, if a citizen wants a printed copy, we'd be happy to do that for them. It has some narrative that talks about the history of the city and the home rule charter and powers of the city and of the council and form of government. There's some discussion about the Meetings Act and Freedom of Information Act, some tips on communicating with the media, some discussion about appointed boards and commissions. And then there's a number of appendices and that's really the meat of it. It includes a copy of the city charter, the council's rules of procedure, a copy of the old Meetings Act, which is very important, very easy to come familiar with. The appointed boards and commissions, the most updated list of all the appointed boards and commissions, an organizational chart, a copy of the strategic plan, the current operating budget, a current street map, the current five-year street plan, and then a community facilities report that we just completed. And this is a, it's a working handbook. As you're going through this, especially the three of you who are new, if you find that there's something that maybe would be helpful to you as a new council member that perhaps ought to be included in the handbook, let us know. We'd be glad to update it and certainly we are always available for any questions that you have or any information that you need on any topic, we'll obviously be available. And that is all I have for your managers' report.
All right. Thank you. Other appointments, we do have a vacancy with our mayor pro town and probably be a good idea just in case something were to happen, either for a vacation, illness, sickness or haven't been anything else happened to the mayor, but anyway, have a mayor pro town just to fill in. So it was here, but I don't know if you want to entertain that.
You mean as far as an appointment, a motion?
Somebody would like to make a motion to.
I would make a motion that Jeff Altough be the mayor pro town.
I would second.
All right, we moved and seconded. Any other discussions? All those in favor of Mr. Altough as mayor pro town?
Yes.
Any opposed? This is your chance. Five zero. Mr. Altough, congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. And also we privately, with the immediate decisions and so forth on fire authority, Mr. Altough has been good to serve last month filling in and I don't mean to tell anybody what to do, but that might be a good thing.
I think I would like to stay on that one.
And then we'll reorganize in January and reset everything then. Is there another motion?
I'd make a motion. Did he take the position of our vote on?
I'll second that motion.
We moved and seconded to make Jeff our designated council person to the fire board. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. That's up our immediate appointments and we'll move on from there in January and I can consider those other pieces and we'll appoint ourselves to various boards and commissions. With that, entertain a motion to adjourn if there's no other business.
I make a motion to adjourn.
And second.
Got a motion seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much.